The Titusville City Council Meeting of September 25, 2018 at 6:30. We have a quorum. I'll call this meeting to order. We have with us this evening Pastor Kopic of Faith Baptist Church, and he will be here to give our invocation. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for the privilege that you have given to us to come together tonight to do your business. I pray that your fear would be upon us, and I pray that, Lord, as we have come, that you would bring us close together in harmony in hearts. Lord, I thank you for the blessing that we could be to one another, and I pray that you'll help us to be exactly that this evening. Thank you for these men and women who are here, Lord. Thank you for the good work that they represent, the good work that they mean to do. We thank you most of all for Jesus, your Son. We thank you for salvation which you have brought to us through Jesus. And I pray, Lord, for everyone here that they would know you, that they would have a relationship with you through Jesus, your Son. Thank you. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend.
Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as for all.
First item of business is approval of minutes.
I'd move to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting on September 11, 2018, and the special city council meeting on September 13, 2018.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If there's hearing any, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. Next item, special recognitions and presentations. I think we completed everything last time, last meeting. Next item is boards and commissions. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. The CRA, Community Redevelopment Agency, Member-at-Large Ms. Kristi Anderson has submitted her resignation effective September 12, 2018. Her term expires on September 30, 2021. Currently, there's one application on file, Mr. Jim Ball, who has submitted his application for consideration. The application is part of your packet.
Mr. Ball, would you like to come up now or after the vote? Whichever.
You guys decide if you want.
Okay. All right. We'll do that. Much pleasure.
I'd move to accept the resignation of Kristi Anderson, Member-at-Large for the CRA, with regrets, with our appreciation, and move to appoint Jim Ball as a Member-at-Large for the term to expire on September 30, 2021.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not hearing any, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. Now, Coach.
Mayor and Council, thank you very much. I'll be brief because I know you have a long agenda, and believe me, I know what long agendas are like. So I just wanted to say that I've had five generations of my family live in downtown, work in downtown, play in downtown, and even shop in downtown, if you can believe that. It's a history that I have a great deal of fondness for, and I honor it. It's important for us to look at the past because it lets us know how far we've come and what we've learned on the way. But it's even more important that we look to the future. So I want to assure you that my vision is squarely focused on what we have ahead of us, not all the great things that we have behind us, although I always will honor that. And many of you know that I'm still actively engaged, very much so in the commercial space development out at the Cape and national policy along those lines, but I do have a lot more time than I used to have. So I look forward. Thank you. I look forward to rejoining the CRA. I did about a 10-year stint on it before Kristi came on board, and I look forward to it. I promise I'll come up to speed quickly. I'm already doing my homework, and I look forward to the first meeting.
I'm sure you'll do a great job, Mr. Ball. You have done this before, so you're well experienced at it, and I know you do a great job at everything you do. So thank you for spending your time with us.
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor, and see you, guys.
And congratulations. Next item, Library District, North Brevard Library District.
The terms of regular members Rhonda Van Zant and Cynthia Williams will expire on September 30, 2018. Both Ms. Williams and Ms. Van Zant have expressed their willingness and desire to continue to serve on this board and have requested a reappointment for two-year term to expire on September 30, 2020. Their applications are attached as part of your packet, and there are no other applications on file for your consideration.
Counsel?
I'd move to reappoint members Rhonda Van Zant and Cynthia Williams to the North Brevard Library District Board with the term to expire on September 30, 2020.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. Next petitions and requests from the public. Does anybody wish to speak at this point on any items that are on the -- well, no, at any items that aren't. Anybody wish to speak tonight? I see no one. We'll go right to the consent agenda.
Yes, sir. We have no cards on consent items, so is there any items that counsel would like to pull before I read the consent for the record?
I see no requests.
Okay. Here I go. Consent agenda item 8A, approve the fiscal year 2018 budget carryforward list. Consent agenda item 8B, approve the award of work order Whiskey Papa Whiskey Romeo 002 to Wright Pierce of Orlando, Florida in the amount of $79,424 effective 10/1/18 to provide engineering and consulting services for utility cybersecurity assessment and authorize the mayor to execute the work order after October 1, 2018. As awarded, this contract is contingent upon available funds in the 2019 budget. Consent agenda item 8C, approve the advisability to develop the downtown form-based code and gateway urban design standards. Consent agenda item 8D, approve the award of contract for bid 18B050 to Gagory Construction Incorporated of Titusville, Florida as a primary contractor to Hinderland Group of Coco, Florida as a secondary contractor for the annual sewer and manhole repair contract during one-year term effective 10/1, 2018, with two optional one-year administrative extensions on annual authorization amount not to exceed $300,000, and authorize the mayor to execute the contract after October 1, 2018. As awarded, this contract is contingent upon available funds in the FY19 budget. Consent agenda item 8E, approve advisability for staff to review and amend code provisions related to Florida-friendly landscape standards, including site design, soil, native vegetation, plant selection, irrigation, yard waste management, pesticide management, et cetera. Consent agenda item 8F, approve the award of bid 18B042 copier rental to North American Office Solutions of Melbourne, Florida in the amount of $127,317.20 for lease and rental for 15 copiers in various city facilities during a five-year lease term, and authorize the city manager to execute the individual copier lease subject to the legal review and resolution and terms and conditions with the city attorney and city manager. Consent agenda item 8G, approve and accept the Resilient Titusville Agreement with East Central Florida Regional Planning Council to complete a scope of work including the Department of Environmental Protection's resiliency grant with the city. Consent agenda item 8H, approve the award of contract bid 18BRAVA060 to BK Earnest LLC of Avita, Florida for repairs of field operations inventory building Lime Street Lift Station Building and the Indian River Heights Lift Station Building in the amount of $18,995 and authorize the city manager to execute the contract. Consent agenda item 8I, accept the award in the amount of $52,532 to fund the FY19 victim family advocate position and approve the budget amendment upon receipt of funds. Consent agenda item 8J, approve invoices for pension and actuarial services work in the amounts of $36,357 dated 8/13/2018 and $40,573 dated 9/12/2018 performed by Gabriel Roderick Smith Company, which included detailed reviews and calculations concerning the IAFF proposals. Consent agenda item 8K, approve resolution 26, 2018 acknowledging the city's approval as the maintenance entity of wrapping of eight traffic signal boxes with vinyl art wraps in the downtown community redevelopment area by the CRA in partnership with the Greater Titusville Renaissance and North Brevard Art League, and authorize the city manager to submit required permits to the Florida Department of Transportation. Consent agenda item 8L, approve easement number 27953 and authorize the mayor to execute the renewal agreement between the Board of Trustees of the Internal Improvement Trust Fund of the State of Florida and the City of Titusville. Consent agenda item 8M, the Titusville Environmental Commission recommended that city council adopt resolution 27, 2018 encouraging all businesses to discontinue providing plastic drinking straws, plastic drinking sticks, and similar plastic items, encouraging residents to reduce the consumption of such items. The TEC further requests that the city council direct the commission to develop the recognition program for local businesses. Consent agenda item 8N, approve advisability for staff to review and make recommendations for setbacks for air conditioning units and generators. Consent agenda item 8O, approve the use of the vendor-of-record, VOR, for the commodities shown in the attached list subject to the appropriation of FY2019 funds for such operational requirements and programs. Approve any changes to the VOR list resulting from competitive procurement actions conducted by other governmental agencies for those expired contracts being used by the city under a piggyback and/or cooperative purchasing agreement. Approve the issuance of purchase orders and contract renewal options to the VOR. Delegate authority to the city manager to authorize purchases exceeding the ordinance limits to the VOR subject to the appropriation of FY19 funds for such operational requirements and programs, and authorize the mayor to execute all contracts to the VOR exceeding $50,000, and authorize the city manager to execute all contracts to the VOR up to $50,000. Consent agenda item 8P, approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Laborers International Union of North America, LIU, Local 630, and the City of Titusville. And there are resolutions in here, sir, so we will need a roll call.
Yes, sir. Call for motion on approval of items A through P.
I'd move to approve items A through P on the consent agenda.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not hearing any, clerk, please do a roll call.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item, ordinances, 9A, second reading ordinances, public hearings, and related action. Mr. City Manager?
The Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as a local planning authority, recommended denial of the original request. The reason for the denial was due to the lot sizes and the house sizes being too small, cutting off wetlands, and only having one access point. The applicant on behalf of the owners requesting a comprehensive plan amendment to change the city's future land use map and rezone approximately 81.39 acres of vacant land located west of Park Avenue, north of Country Club Drive. The purpose of this amendment is to make the property feasible for development and minimize wetland impacts by utilizing smaller lots that are 50 feet wide. The request proposes to amend the existing conservation future land use in low-density residential and rezone the property from single-family medium-density R1B to open space and recreation OR to the planning and development PDE zoning with a master plan for purposes of construction of a new residential subdivision. And staff is here to answer any questions that you may have before the applicant and the public hearing.
Mr. Sack, do you have any comments?
I just wanted to make sure that we understood where we are in the process. This is the transmittal hearing, and the process is that if it is transmitted, it will go to the Department of Economic Opportunity for review, come back to us with comments. Then there will be another set of public hearings in which any comments that the state has given will be addressed at that time. There'll be additional public hearings. It'll go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we will have a second round in which case we will talk about the comprehensive plan amendment as well as the master plan and the actual zoning to plan development. So this is the first step of a multi-step process. Also, at the July council meeting, it was requested that the applicant meet with the citizens. There was a public meeting on August 27. The applicant did revise the master plan subsequent to that meeting. Their additional upland area is being preserved by removing 16 lots from the proposal. The original proposal was 126 lots. This is now 110 lots. In addition to that, the minimum house size was increased from 1,200 square feet to 1,400 square feet. The current zoning is R1B in which the floor area minimum size is 1,200 square feet. So this is now in excess of the minimum required under the current zoning. In addition to that, the habitat crossing in the form of a box culvert or metal arch pipes has been included where the proposed road transverses the wetland area. The staff has reviewed this plan, and because of the amount of wetlands that are currently being proposed for preservation, as well as the common open space that is being provided, which you would not get under the current R1B zoning, in addition to that, the higher floor area and the smaller number of lots that could be developed under the R1B but are currently proposed for fewer, the staff does believe that this is consistent with the comprehensive plan and can be considered for transmittal should counsel wish to do so. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions from counsel? I see none, but I just want to -- as you said, we will get two other -- two additional times to deal with this particular item, right? After it goes to the state, that's kind of something we have to do.
Yes, sir. There's a lot -- this is not the final decision on this project.
Any further discussion from counsel at this point? Any questions? I don't see any. I'll open the public hearing. Clerk, are the speakers cards on this?
Yes, sir.
Please call the cards.
We have the applicant.
Oh, the applicant goes first. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Thank you for letting me come back. I appreciate that. I think we've, as you basically asked us to do, we met with the neighbors. We had a really good meeting. We talked about a lot of issues, and I think that the client heard the concerns. And we promised when we left this chamber last time that we would make any reasonable change that we thought was reasonable, and for the most part, they were. We couldn't get all the way there. Some of the requests we thought were a little unreasonable, but we did kind of settle on five major items that were the topics of discussion of the meeting, first being the lot size, which kind of went hand in hand with the upland preservation. So even though it was two issues, it was kind of addressed together because, you know, if you want to try to maximize your upland preservation, having smaller lot sizes and clustering your development makes sense. And I think that, for the most part, from what I gathered, that the audience understood that. And for the most part, I think we had no objection to the lot size maintaining at 50 feet. And we talked about what would be an acceptable increase of open space that we're going to include in the upland areas in addition to all the preservation of the wetlands that we're doing, and we talked about a 50% increase in what we had previously. We thought that was unreasonable, and then we came and did some design work and found out that it was achievable. So we actually can make that 50% increase that we had talked about at the meeting. So the plan that you see is -- has over a 50% increase of the previous plan in upland preservation. Another one of the topics was the habitat crossing. There was a discussion about three crossings, two in the wetland, one in the upland. We felt that an upland crossing was not really reasonable. We've never really seen that anywhere before. Any wildlife that can cross in the dry will probably cross the road anyway without trying to find some kind of alternate method, but the ones that are living in the wetlands and the water will now be able to get to the other side without having to go out on the road, and we put a provision that it was a sufficient size that those types of wildlife can get through from one side of the road to the other. So they asked for three. We provided two. We had zero, so I think that's a pretty fair compromise, and I think that's reasonable. The other -- one of the other concerns was the value, the market value, the depreciation of value on the neighbors. We provided a study that's in your package, and I think that shows that there will be no adverse impact on the value of the adjacent homes. There was a fifth one. What was the fifth one? I'm trying to think. Anyway, oh, the -- exactly. Most important. How could I forget? House size. House size. So the PD is 1,000. We had talked about saying we would go to 1,200. The residents, some of the residents wanted 1,600. We had talked about doing 1,300. After some -- after meeting with you all, I'm sure you have to divulge that we met with every one of you, we also made some additional changes. We increased to 1,400, which we think is more than reasonable, and we also preserved some areas that we thought were very sensitive. We adjusted the layout to preserve that western border where we think that's where the most valuable upland vegetation is. So with those five things, I think we've reasonably met our obligation to make this a really good project, something I think that you'll be proud of if you so choose to forward this to the state. And obviously, if there's any other issues that come up along the way, we could address those as well. But we've done a lot of these, and this is a -- this is, I think they've made a real good compromise. I think we've come a long way, and I hope that you feel that this is approvable. So I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions from counsel? Yes? No? No? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You will get opportunity to come back if you need to.
I'm sorry. Can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. So I saw in our package that you had a study done on the home prices and the potential impact on the surrounding homes.
Yes.
Have you shared that with the citizens?
We did -- we forwarded it to -- no, the -- no, I'm sorry. We did not. No, we did not.
So they're not aware of it?
No, not that I know of. We submitted it in the package, and I assume you have it, but no, we did not forward that to the citizens.
And as long as we have you here, what is the approximate price of these homes at this time?
We didn't -- I -- we figured we're going to be somewhere in the market around, you know, the high twos, low threes, but I think all that was kind of spelled out, but I think that's our target market based on the area and the size of the houses and the development that we're proposing.
So you're saying 250 to 350?
Somewhere in that neighborhood. Yes, sir.
They're not cheap homes.
Yeah? No, they're not.
Anything else from counsel? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Clerk, would you call the cards, please?
Yes.
Name and address, please.
Thank you. My name is Mike Scully. I'm a resident of the city of Titusville. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, council members, City Manager Reese. Here to speak in opposition to the comprehensive plan amendment, and quite frankly, wanted to share with you a little bit about what I'm thinking and what I believe many others in my community, which is directly adjacent to this project, are thinking. First, I want to thank Ms. Busaka and her staff for arranging that meeting and bringing us together, and thank Mr. Moya and his staff for the hard work they've done. They've certainly exhibited a lot of due diligence and done a lot of great work trying to get to a compromised position, so thank you very much. But I'm still here to oppose the proposal, and my opposition really is simply about maintaining the R1B zoning. And it quite simply is this. This is really about what is consistent with the surrounding neighborhood, what is consistent with the existing constructed homes that are immediately adjacent to this particular property. This is about the legacy that we're This is about the legacy that we're leaving, not for anyone in this room. It's not about anybody that's in this room here today. This is about the legacy that we leave for our children and for our grandchildren. Whether or not 50-foot lot lines really are the market, not today, but 10 years from now, 20 years from now, 50 years from now. I've lived in Titusville 50 years. Many of you have been in our community even longer. Drive around Titusville, and we see some neighborhoods that have aged well and some neighborhoods that haven't aged well. I'm leaning for a high-quality project, R1B, that will age well, that we'll be proud of 10 years from now, that we'll be proud of 10 years, 20 years from now, and that we'll be proud of 50 years from now. And be able to look at and say, this is what we want our community to be. This is what we're proud of in Titusville, because this is our legacy. We're going to make a decision here today. This council is going to make a decision today, one of many, I get that, one of many decisions that ultimately will define whether this project works or not. But when we think about the fact that this is an existing piece of property that has an environmental overlay, I'm not an environmentalist, and I don't really even know what all of that means. But what I do know is God is not making any more land. God's not making any more environmentally sensitive land. And I truly hate to make a decision today that negatively impacts the environmental sensitivity, the endangered environmental sensitivity of land we still have here in Titusville. R1B is consistent, mayor, could I have one minute?
Thirty seconds, sir.
Okay. R1B is consistent with our neighborhood. The home directly adjacent to mine, the one closest to this project today, is R1B, sold less than a year ago, 2,700 square feet, $255,000, bought by a young couple in their 30s with a small child. There's a brand-new project directly across the street, R1B, a 3,000-square-foot home on a lot a little over three acres, being purchased by a young couple with small elementary-age children. There absolutely is a market in Titusville for R1B properties. Absolutely unquestionable. I'm not buying that R1, that 50-foot lot lines is the future. I believe 50-foot lot lines is much like corduroy and all of the other fashion statements, bell-bottom jeans that we've seen in the past. And quite frankly, I thought about coming here today in a pair of corduroy bell-bottom jeans to make a point, but I couldn't find them, thank God. But I'm asking this council to vote no on this proposal. Think about the legacy we are leaving for our children and for our grandchildren. God's not making any more environmental land. We need to maintain R1B consistent zoning in Titusville. I believe that's best for our community, and it's best for our children and our grandchildren. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of this gentleman?
I do.
All right.
Just so I'm straight, you spoke about how some, and I've been here 50 years as well, and I would agree, there are certain communities that, or areas that have aged well and those that have not. But my question to you is, are you concerned predicting or projecting that this is a community that wouldn't age well?
Councilman, I don't, I don't know. I am not an expert in development or real estate. I have to rely on the experts, Ms. Busaka, Mr. Moya, who really can define that for us. What I know is, when I see something that's well-maintained and well-preserved, it adds value to our community. That's what I'm looking for, is something that will hold value, that will add value to Titusville. And I think we're all here for the right reason. We believe in that quality of life. That's what I'm looking for. And I believe R1B, an R1B, a 75-foot lot line is going to be more amenable to maintaining that valuation than a smaller lot size. I got to be honest with you, I was very encouraged to hear from Mr. Moya that the price target that they're looking at is high twos, low threes. I mean, that's fantastic. I love that. Whether or not that's reality or not, I don't know, and nobody in this room does know. The market will dictate that. But if in fact those are the numbers we're talking about, I think that that makes the valuation component a little bit more manageable. If we're talking about building little tiny houses on little tiny lots, I'm not a believer that that's going to add value to our community. And that's my concern. Mr. Moya can't give us that assurance. The city can't provide that assurance. So lacking that assurance, I'm asking the council to simply vote no until we have those assurances from a developer that we can touch, feel, and see, and a developer that is ready to make a commitment to our community and to lay out to the staff, this is what we're going to do. None of this pie-in-the-sky stuff that can change at a moment's notice.
Okay. And again, it sounded like there was some discussion between he and you all concerning the increase a little bit here, and you eliminated some of the, some of the units to do some of the increasing. So it sounded to me like he was doing what he could to move in that direction. I guess what I was, my takeaway or my, I don't want to use the word concern, but my question was, how can we know what the value is going to be? And then you asked for an assurance. I don't think any building or any neighborhood or subdivision or development that we've approved, we can know what it's going to be like in 10, 15, or 20 years. We, we're, there's some work, I think, going on, and we've approved something in Tigua Bay, which is a million-dollar stuff. But I can't tell you what it's going to look like in 50 years. So I'd like to be on the optimistic side of things and say that if we approve something, we, it's our expectation that there's going to be some value there, and I like the compromise that he has tried to make. So that's kind of where I'm at right now. Thank you.
Agreed. Next card, please.
Roger Lee.
You have a question?
Well, this is actually for Ms. Busaka.
Okay.
So if it was left R1B, the houses would be 1,200 square feet, or potentially could be 1,200 square feet, correct?
That's correct.
And how many houses could be built on that piece of property?
The maximum density permitted under the comprehensive plan is five units an acre.
Five units an acre?
Five units an acre, yes, ma'am. Now, they're not going to yield five units an acre because you have to have some roads there, so there, it will be less than that. And off the top of my head, I would say perhaps four units an acre. So four times the developable amount of, this is just off, about 160 units.
Okay, so we're looking at maybe 160 units of 1,200 square feet versus?
110, of 1,400 minimum.
Of 1,400 minimum?
Yes, ma'am.
With area in conservation?
Yes, ma'am.
Under R1B?
No, that, under R1B, the, there is no requirement to preserve uplands. There is a requirement to put a 20-foot buffer of vegetation around the property, which is also going to be required in this development. But the uplands that you see in the current development would not be required to be developed. In addition to that, if the developer came in and requested one unit per five acres in the wetlands, they could get that with a conditional use permit approved by this council.
So basically, by agreeing to this, we're talking about less houses, more square foot, and more conservation?
Yes, ma'am. That's how the staff understands this development.
Okay.
Now, in addition to that, and I know that in your, in your information, you've received a report explaining the cost of mitigating also. So in the event that the wetlands were able to be developed and mitigated, then additional units could be put on that property as well. Now, that would require a rezoning, but once the land is no longer a wetland, then it has typically, and this is under the comprehensive plan, if it's no longer a wetland, then it's really not OR anymore.
But nobody's proposing that at this?
No, that, but that is possible in the event that it's, that the wetlands, the developer chooses not to move forward with this planned development and preserve the wetlands. But, you know, there is a cost to that, and I think that's been outlined in your report.
So what I'm saying, the plan he has is actually better for the people who live there than live in that area.
There are fewer units, there are, they're farther away from the existing residential development. That is correct.
And if, and if there was mitigation of the wetlands, my understanding is that has always been something that would lead to flooding, or higher risk of flooding.
Well, the engineering should keep that from happening.
With hope, yeah.
Yes, but that is the hope.
Okay.
Yes.
Anybody else? Sir, name and address, please.
My name's Roger Leith. I live in Royal Oak Drive. I don't know when y'all talked this stuff over, but nobody talked it over to me. I never was informed about any of it, and I never went to any meetings, never had a chance to voice my opinion to anybody since I was here the last time. So I'd just like to reiterate what I said last time, that you have small lots, small houses, and it doesn't seem like it's uniform for that neighborhood. I think it's going to be a lot of traffic, and there's going to be tiny little houses, and it is going to impact the value of the Royal Oak area. I can't imagine that these little houses with 50-foot lots are going to yield 200 and some thousand dollars. Well, I might be able to get about 70-some thousand for my house, and I live on Royal Oak, and my, sure, my house is going to be better than these little houseboats you're going to put over there. So the difference between 1,000 and 1,400 is still like, you know, that's the difference between a pickup truck and one with a backseat is still a pickup truck. And these are little houses, and it's going to be a lot of additional traffic. I know last time you indicated it's minimal, but it's not going to be minimal. Park Avenue is like a race course now. People go zipping up and down there. I ride my bike around the neighborhood, and we've got a bad traffic problem on Royal Oak Drive and Park. And this isn't going to help, it's going to hurt, and it's going to hurt a lot. I don't care how you cook the books, it's just going to be a lot of cars, and it's a school zone there. And I want to know, is this Royal Oak Drive versus the bank? Why is everybody so worried about doing this? Why can't you put maybe 25 or 30 nice homes back there that really would yield over 200,000? Because the 200,000, these little cracker boxes are not 200,000-dollar homes. I mean, I'm just saying what everybody else is thinking because I'm not really based on political correctness. I'm just looking at it realistically, down to earth. I live in this neighborhood. We don't have a lot of burglaries, crimes. I'm like to keep it that way. And you put 110 little cracker boxes back there, these people are going to seep over into the neighborhood, just like those apartments at the end of Royal Oak. That just about, that really hurt this neighborhood. And believe me, every day I have to take beer cans off my yard. It's apparently whoever's walking down there, they can drink a tall boy from the time they get from those apartments to my house, and I know they drink Bush beer, and I pick up the cans constantly. And you're going to have 110 more of them or more, and they're just going to have to come over there, just, they don't have any business there. There's no conversion, no commercial endeavors, but they're just going to go see what we have, let's go look around. And it's not going to have a good impact on my neighborhood, it's going to have a bad impact. The only thing that's unknown is how bad. And I might not be, and I'm kind of the voice of what everybody's thinking, but nobody wants to come up here and say it, but it's not, it doesn't belong there. Just like your friend eloquently said last time, let's not have something there that doesn't belong there.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next card, please, clerk.
Scott Bray.
My name is Scott Bray. I live at 3155 Tree Top Drive across the street. I'm an environmental engineer. I worked for the St. John's River Water Management District in ERP permitting for seven years. So I know a little bit about this. I did meet with Mr. Moya, I appreciate it. He was very good, you know, in his studies. There are just some things that I'm questioning. Why are we here? We're here because they want to do a P and Z change, right? That's the whole reason. They want smaller square footage lots, smaller house sizes, of which now they've, they're, they did bring it up to 1,400 square feet. To see a 1,400-square-foot house make 200,000 or more, that would be great. That'd be great for me. But again, we don't know. We will have additional wetland impacts. I know, I think they're saying you have a five acre max, maximum. They're doing 5.12. I proposed, you know, why not do a bridge? Why not even eliminate the bridge and do it as two phases? First phase on Park Avenue. When that second phase ever comes in, they can come in and get it developed. That's one thing they can do. With the smaller lot sizes, you'll have more impervious area. We just saw a hurricane come through up in North Carolina. You have what, 30 inches, record, 30 inches of record rain. If we get 30 inches, that's blown, that's a 1,000-year storm event, okay? Question I have, a couple of questions I do have, because the way we did it with St. John's is you permit the plans and everything associated, but the plans are what it is. 100-year flood elevation, he says, is 18.7. I don't know where it is on this site as it exists and where it is when it's proposed. So how much wet, 100-year flood plane issues do we have? I don't know. Being where we are with society today and climate change, more intense hurricanes, we're going to see more and more intense rains, okay? What is the seasonal high water table of the wetland? The reason I'm asking this is because they're going to be wet ponds. And the wet ponds are going to have to be as high as the other, as the existing seasonal high water elevation of that wetland. Don't know. Upland preservation, we do have that. Problem is, is I would take away the dog walks, nature walks, because you're going to have people upsetting the upland preservation by having those dog walks, nature walks. We have great sidewalks by the city of Titusville there. I go there all the time. I use them all the time with my dog. Park Avenue Baptist Church also has a play area. We can get rid of the play areas, make that. 30 seconds?
Counsel?
Motion to give him another two minutes?
I'll be done in less than that.
Okay.
Sure.
One minute?
One minute.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, sir.
Park Avenue Baptist Church, like I said, they have a play area right across, right behind it, adjacent to it. They just put up a sand, a sand court, volleyball courts. They have play areas there, open areas. They can use that, utilize that. I use it, too. Getting back to the developer, when he came in back at the last meeting, he said this property was inherited by the property owners now, inherited. So why do they have to make a marketable certain amount of money? Again, going back to R1B. Why do we need to change these? They can do with what they can with what we, what's there. We've got to preserve these wetlands and the uplands if possible. Do the right thing. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
Yes. Don't go anyplace.
Pardon me?
Don't go anyplace.
Okay.
You were talking about the impervious area, and I understand what you're saying in that we're creating a space with more impervious area.
Correct.
How do we get around that? I mean, people are, people are coming in, people are wanting places to live.
Yep.
I will tell you, the kids are telling me, the realtors are telling me, the kids want smaller lots, they don't want to spend the time on it. I'd like to see our wetlands preserved. But how do we get rid of some of the impervious areas?
How do you, how do you get rid of the existing?
Well, I'd like to get rid of the existing, but let's go for proposed.
Okay, well, that's where you make, going, I would go with larger lots, the R1B lots, 7,500, I mean, you're, I know he, and I hadn't done the actual calculations because I couldn't quite read it based on what I got from the city of the changes of the 110. So I haven't done the calculations of it. But based on the project area of looking at what the upland area is and the developable area as composed to what the impervious area is, I don't know. You know? So.
Yeah, but you also want to turn around and preserve the wetlands, too.
I want to preserve the uplands.
Well, both.
And to be honest with you, yeah, I know two. And to be honest with you, yeah, I know two, the two that are proposed for the critters, I could see being that's, because that's mainly your five-acre wetland impacts, is it not? Is the road crossing connecting it? Does anybody know?
Maybe. I don't know.
Peggy? Do you have?
On the wetland impacts, the 5.12?
I can't speak to the total acreage, but that majority of the wetland impacts are from the road.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, it's 700 feet, 50 feet wide.
Okay, okay. I was hoping you had some words of wisdom for us.
Oh, build a bridge. Do it in two phases, have them two separate phases. And don't do the bridge. Because they're going to, they're eventually, you know, proposing it to go to the other way. And when that side opens up and starts developing, which it sounds like it will be, to the west...
Coming from the other side.
To the west, yeah. And that way, it eliminates five acres, 12% of your wetland impacts.
Okay.
I mean, do phase one, and then phase two.
Okay. Thank you.
That's one way. Thank you.
You have another question?
Thank you. So, and the two questions, Mr. Pesacca, if you can help me, and if you have more follow-up questions. So I heard you say the 100-year floodplain issues and on the plan.
Yeah, I don't know where they are.
Mr. Pesacca, can you help me out with that?
There is a portion of this property, which is the 100-year floodplain. And we will, what Mr. Bray was talking about, much of it is engineering that gets addressed later in the process. But they will be required to meet all of our floodplain requirements.
Okay.
And, but that is, there is, we do not request that they do engineering when they're not even sure that they'll get their rezoning.
Totally get that.
So that's where we are in this process.
Is that inclusive of engineering that would reflect the high water table?
Absolutely. All that geotech work will get done.
That's what I, it's hard with the conceptual going... How do you know?
But we have an engineer that makes sure that they review everything, and if it meets the code, it gets approved. And if it doesn't meet the code, it does not get approved.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Clerk, call the next card, please.
Kevin Cunningham.
Name and address for the records, please, sir.
Kevin Cunningham, Treetop Drive, immediately east of the proposed property development. What I've handed out to the city clerk and is being distributed out to the council members right now is a simple word overlay of the plot with the aerial photograph. And as I've annotated on the bottom of the page, looks to me, still some more engineering needs to be done. That secondary access looks like it's coming out at the pond. And I'd like to have the engineer on record do a little bit more due diligence. I'm sure they put in a lot of work. Something doesn't line up for me. On a secondary subject, I've, since our last meeting, I've driven by, through a lot of the developments off of Sisson Road, which I believe many of those lots are 50-foot wide lots. Neighbors are stacked on top of neighbors. I'm not a big fan of it, but whether or not I would go on record as opposing this strictly for that, I can't. So that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Ms. Cunningham? I see none. Thank you, sir. Next card, please.
Charles Tucker.
I ask your indulgence for one extra minute before I even start.
Why don't you go to three, and then we'll decide what it is.
All right. Charles Tucker, living in Central Park Estates, directly across from this proposed development. This zoning change to R1B from the planned development is out of character for the area. As indicated, all the existing zoning around it is R1B. It's going to allow 110 50-foot wide lots, 5,000 square foot. Those are 2/3 of the size of the minimum lot size in my neighborhood. And again, the surrounding area, so it's inconsistent. The home size of 1,400 square foot will be 64% of the size of the average home in our subdivision and 75% of the average in the surrounding neighborhoods. Again, I think that's inconsistent with the area. I'm also concerned about the house sizes. We initially started with a 1,000-square-foot house. That kind of tells me what they're planning. We've heard maybe cheap homes on a 5,000-square-foot lot. The applicant has told us over and over, this is what buyers want, smaller homes, smaller lots. Based upon the 2018 National Association of Realtors Generational Trends Report, 1,870 square feet as an average. And according to the National Association of Home Builders, the median lot size in 2017 was 8,560 square feet. We have no disclosure of who this potential builder is. We talked about, if we knew who that was, that might help with quality issues. If I knew it was a builder reputable in town, then it is going to negatively impact our property values. He stated $300,000. His own report, right here on page four, says $189,000 to $259,000. I didn't include that, but you have that in your agenda packet. So $189,000 house. The average square foot calculations they used in their report are actually wrong. They made an error. They said that their actual, around the area, nearby subdivisions is 1,733 square foot, and it's actually 1,854. And we have not even talked about the closest new development park preserve down on the corner of Park. Smallest model being built there is 1,672 square foot, and those are on 65-foot lots. And then there's only one access point to this property. It'd be directly across the street from one of our access points and just a few feet away from Park Avenue Baptist Church and the school that they run. So I'm concerned about safety there. And then, as has been mentioned, this allows wetlands to be brought out of the conservation area in excess of the land development regulations. The proposed density that they show there is 1.34 units per acre. Again, there's a miscalculation in that. It's actually 8.7 units per acre, and the current allowed density is 5.8. This property, I'm sure you know, is owned by a bank, an out-of-town bank. They have no vested interest here. They're just looking to sell the property, get the best zoning they can to move the property.
You have 30 seconds more, if you'd like.
They're currently advertising it for sale, and I've included that in your packet. And they're indicating on that site that the city has already indicated approval for 125-plus units. That's before you've decided, and that's after P and Z said no. So I'm for smart development, don't get me wrong, and growth that provides jobs and houses. But this development's not well, while it has some well-planned aspects, and I appreciate the changes that they have made, I also believe it should be consistent with the surrounding area. So I oppose this zoning request as submitted and ask you to deny it as planning and zoning dead at their July 18 meeting, or require some further revisions to make it more amelible. I don't believe it currently meets the criteria for approval in Section 3440 of the Land Development Regulations regarding consistency of existing zoning and intensity of the current and proposed zoning.
Any additional time, sir?
No, I'm done.
Are you an engineer, or you seem to know a lot about?
I'm a medically retired CPA.
Okay, thank you, sir.
That's why I found all the miscalculations.
Any questions? Ah, yes, go ahead. Wait.
There was quite a few, so I'm sure the applicant made note of those.
I've got a copy.
Yeah, that would probably be helpful for rebuttal, maybe, to some of those. And the question, can you just, to help me out, they've already listed. The bank already has listed.
It's listed for sale. You can see that on the last page of your attachment.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Curiosity. So I understand you guys are opposed to the 50-foot lot lines. If they were to increase the lot size a little bit...
We had talked about at the meeting going to maybe 65-foot, like is down on Park, the Park Reserve. But they elected not to do that, so I don't, I don't know if they're agreeable to that. I don't believe, there's no way you'd put 160 lots in there with 75-foot wide lots. I'm not a developer or builder, but I'm sure he'll tell you that they, he told us that wasn't feasible as an R1B project. And that's because of all the wetlands. You can't, it costs too much money to mitigate all that, so...
Any other questions?
If there was going to be an exchange here, and he was willing to increase the lot line, is there something that the community would be willing to give up?
I don't want to speak for everybody else, but I think if we were in the 65-foot range with a 1,600-plus square-foot house, that would alleviate some of my concerns.
Well, I'm thinking if you were in a 65-foot range, and it was a minimum square foot of 1,400. Because, you know, chances are they're not going to go in and say, you know, let's build houses that are 1,400 and 1 square foot. They're going to build whatever the market requests.
Chances are, but I just don't want to take that chance. I mean, down the road, they're doing 1,600. We're deed restricted to 1,800, and our average is 2,200, so, you know.
But what would be the trade-off? Is there a trade-off? Mr. Scully looked like he had something back there to say.
Sir, he can't speak from back there. Did you want him to come back?
Please.
You have to come up to the mic, sir.
Charles has the facts. God bless him, my incredible research. I certainly, I'm not in a position to speak for all of the neighbors. For me personally, I think the 65-foot lot line would go a long way towards, towards part of that compromise. That was something that we talked about in the meeting. And again, I really have to give credit to Mr. Moya and his team. They did, they heard what the community was asking for, and he did go and actually went above and beyond where we thought we would be in a lot of areas. The one thing we didn't move on was the 50-foot lot lines. That was the one thing that we weren't able to move on. But again, he did, they did concede to 110 lots from, I think, what, original 126 or something like that, so... But at least in my mind, I think 65 would go a long way towards getting some movement from the community and probably going to 1,500 or even a 1,600 square foot minimum. But, you know, what we heard from a lot of the neighbors was, we're not hung up so much on the 75-foot, but we're very concerned about what 50 will bring, very concerned about what 50-foot lot lines will bring.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone?
Yeah, Mayor, if I could?
Yes, sir.
First of all, Mr. Tucker, this is an incredible report. So, and I don't know if I need you to come up or not. I'm going to make one other comment. But I was in education, grading papers for 35 years, and this is an A. That's amazing. But I do want, and maybe it'll, you know, I was listening, and I'm listening, and I was looking at your stats and facts in the National Association of Realtors, and then it hit me that just two weeks ago, if I'm not mistaken, we were at a North Brevard Economic Summit hosted by Commissioner Pritchett. And I remembered precisely that the Realtor Association, like all, three of them, three people, three or four people, they all stood up at one time, and they're like, you know, they're turning around, and, you know, where are you contractors and you builders and even some of us to approve? They said, you know, we need tiny houses. I'm not saying go tiny houses. I'm not saying that. But they are saying that what they need and what they're seeing from the millennials that are coming in with the SpaceX and with the Blue Origin, et cetera, is the, they don't want big houses. And I remember Commissioner Pritchett saying, you know what, they might not, but I like my big bathroom. So the point I'm making is, some of us are in a different mindset. You know, I'm way too big for a tiny house. I'll tell you that right now. So that being said, it just hit me that the realtors in this area are saying there's a need for the tiny houses. That's what they use. I don't know that we want to talk tiny houses, and I don't consider a 1,400-square-foot a tiny house. I think they go as low as 600 or 700 square feet. But the point I'm making is, if you're looking at, and your stats or facts are saying 189,000, you're looking at 250,000. I feel pretty good about the millennials coming in. And one of the things that I want to make sure we did on this council is, you know, make sure that we had housing for the people who were coming in with the space program, and that they didn't live in Viera, and they didn't live in Lake Notor or Merritt Island, that we had a place for them to go to. So that's a factor to me. So that's my words, and you still get an A.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure, his own report says the houses are going to sell between 189 and 259, not mine.
And I'm not saying that that's wrong, and that's fine with me. I'm envisioning millennials coming in wanting smaller houses. I said this at the last meeting. I have a sister-in-law who, her husband, actually is a retired colonel in the Air Force, and they live in a very upper-end area. And they have the houses that are close enough that if I go to the restroom, I'm almost ducking. I mean, they're just that close, and that's not for me either. But it does seem like there's some sort of movement in that area that we can't ignore.
My two millennial kids don't want a small house like that, but, you know, somewhere around 2,000 square foot is what, you know, so just...
Well, thank you.
Next card, please.
Mr. Weisenger.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
My biggest concern...
Name and address for the records, sir.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
My name is Boyd Weisenger, and I do not live in Titusville. I live in Memes. But I lived in Titusville for 49 and a half years. And I've been a member of Brevard County School Board for 40 years as a teacher and coach and troop officer. My concern here is not about, I guess, the houses. My concern is the clientele. Because just next to that is Park Avenue Baptist School, Park Avenue Christian Academy, it's called now. But for 18 years, I was a coach there, and I have a vested interest in Park Avenue Baptist Church, 40 years there, and the school itself. My real concern is, what is this going to do to the school? What is the traffic going to do to the school? Who are going to be the clientele in these houses? Now, I had a 1,400-square-foot house, and to me, it was small. But I lived in it 45 and a half years. So I understand the house sizes. I also understand that I've got an interest in that school of almost 400 kids. So my question is, and the question to you is, how do you support this situation as comprised to the school itself and the church? The church is not the issue. The school is the issue. I'm concerned about those kids, and we have K3 through 8th grade. They're smaller kids. How many of them walk? I can't answer that question. Was that going to be your question?
No, I was going to try and answer your question.
Okay.
I have a vested interest in it, too. Two of the most precious things in my life go to that school, my two granddaughters.
Right.
What we're looking, and I know what you were driving at as to the clientele, but that's not typically what goes into these homes now. Now, we talked about millennials, and they're a big part of it. But it's also retirees, like me. I used to live on South Carpenter Road, had five acres, and horses and three kids, and it was great. My wife also, she was there. But when the kids grew up and left me with the yard and the horses, I didn't want to do that anymore. Because it's a, so we moved into a townhome. And that has virtually no square feet per yard, and that's basically what I was looking for. Somebody else does that, we pay a fee so that whatever yard work is done is done outside. So it's not just millennials. It's retirees who want it as much. And we have some examples of that already in town. I always forget which street it's on, but it's on, it's a small development. Been there a few years. They're small. I don't know exactly, Peggy, you know where I'm talking about? It's either on Knox, McCray, or Harrison.
Sisson Meadows has 50-foot wide lots. Sisson Meadows and...
Yeah, I think that's it.
Or is it Sisson, yeah, Sisson Meadows?
It must be that one. And it's a very nice area. I've driven through there, small homes, storehouses, a lot of retirees, and also some millennials. So I don't, I don't think, it's, I've heard people saying poor people and so forth. I don't think, especially with the price of this, that that's what they're looking for, that who's going to go there. So, thank you, sir. I appreciate you coming in for Memes.
My last statement would be...
Yes, sir, I took some of your time. So go right ahead.
My last statement would be protect the children. My last statement would be protect the children. Thank you.
I couldn't agree with you more, sir. I wouldn't be doing it if I thought it would any harm possible. Next card, please.
The last card is Charles Long.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Sir, would you like to come up and give us your side?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to, to speak and, and answer some of the, I'm not sure if I can answer some of the concerns. Some of them are new. Some of them didn't come up at the meeting at all. So, a little surprised to hear them. Obviously, you know, safety is, is everybody's concern. And I don't, I don't know if there's a difference between the zoning, what's more safer than the other. I don't know if that's, that could be done in a, in a zoning hearing to say that lots, R-one-B homes are safer than P-D homes. It's the number of homes, and if, and if we did R-one-B, and if we could get the same amount of lots, then it's, the, the, the safety issue is not, it, there's no difference between the two. So, I guess I just wanted to, really, I, I was kind of confused on what I heard, because when we did talk about lot size, I was under the impression that most of people were okay with fifty-foot lots because we were providing the additional upland preservation. So, I'm hearing people come up here talking about, and one guy was right. God's not making any more land. He definitely isn't making any more environmentally sensitive land. So, why would you encourage R-one-B to where you would preserve absolutely no upland? Zero. We wouldn't have to preserve anything. And we could go and start impacting wetlands and, and creating more lots and, and doing something that's totally detrimental to what I think we're trying to achieve here. So, I don't really understand the philosophy of why we think big lots bring bigger homes when the minimum lot size for R-one-B is twelve hundred, and we're guaranteeing at least fourteen hundred. And we're preserving as much upland buffer as possible when R-one-B, we'd be preserving absolutely zero. So, I'm a little confused from what I'm hearing, because I think when we talked about upland preservation, that was very, very important, and that was one of the reasons why we, we took away some of the lots. So, we're reducing the traffic impact. We're increasing the upland bus, buffer preservation. We're guaranteeing you two hundred square feet more per house than if we just stayed with the zoning. Now, the average is gonna be bigger. Everybody knows that. They don't build, you know, the, the numbers are right here. Based on the report that Mr. Tucker brought up, the average is a lot bigger than fourteen hundred. Fourteen might be the absolute minimum, but there could be some nineteen hundred. There could be some twenty-four hundred square foot homes in this, in this. And the impervious area is almost ideal for smaller lots, because if you want to have a bigger house, you go two-story, and you actually have less impervious on the surface. So, if you have a larger lot, you can have a lot more impervious surface. So, I'm getting a little conflicting information from the testimony that's being provided. And I understand this is a quasi-judicial hearing, at least I believe it is, and I've really seen no, no facts presented to you at all. I've seen a lot of emotions and a lot of possibilities and maybes, but I don't think there's been a lot of facts presented to you. We've provided, I think we have provided those facts. So, I don't see anything that disputes what we're planning. And I think if the, the intent is to cluster development, you've got wetlands working against us, you've got hundred-year floodplain working against us. Smart development would be to cluster development. That's why you have a PD ordinance, because it really is smart growth. It's clustering development, preserving uplands, preserving wetlands, preserving hundred-year floodplain, and, and providing buffers. If we did R-one-B, we'd have no buffers to the neighbors, zero. They would butt right up against the property, and we're providing extensive buffers from the, from the perimeter. So, if we're maintaining the trees, you really won't see this, because we're not really providing that many lots. We're, we're building in the areas that we can build, preserving the perimeter buffers, preserving the uplands, and minimizing the impact to the environment. So, I, I really don't know what else to say. I think we've done everything we possibly can to meet, I think, what the real issues are. You know, and it, I think maybe I made a mistake when I said if we had R-one-B, this project might not ever get built. And I think maybe that's what they want. I don't think they want this project to get built. So, to, to really to say, let's keep it R-one-B, that's almost guarantees that nothing will happen. And I don't think having nothing happen on this property is really, makes any sense. I think it, it's, it's, should be developed, and it should be developed very smartly. And I think that that's what we're proposing, and I hope you agree. And if you have any more questions, I'll be happy to answer those for you.
Counsel, any questions? I see none at this time.
Thank you.
He has one.
Thank you. Just, my, and there was a point by a gentleman. So, the exit, the exit going west into the, it, it looks like it just drops off into the lake.
It probably, yeah. There's a note that that, that location will change when that property is developed. That, that will float.
Okay, clear. Thank you, sir.
No problem. Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
With that, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll have counsel discussion. I would very much like to hear from each of you, because we do not have our fifth member here.
Yeah, I'll start. I look at it and go, yeah, I would rather have the, at least a sixty-foot lot line. Just because it would be nice to have some area between the houses, and I hate having houses one on top of the other. I will say, I have two millennials. One's living in three hundred and fifty square feet in Brooklyn, and the other one is living in seven hundred and fifty square feet in Seattle. And that's what they want. They don't want to mow the lawn the way mom used to mow the lawn. They, they just, they don't like that. They want something they can mow in fifteen, fifteen minutes flat. That's it. So, I like the idea of planned developments because we are preserving a lot of the area. And like the one out on Carpenter, I mean, everybody was concerned that they wanted to have these one-acre lots, and the proposal was to take this piece of land and put half of it in conservation. And Peggy knows what I'm talking about. And then have small lots. They all, pretty much all of them, looked out over the wetlands. So, they had big lots, but they only had the small area they had to take care of. And I thought, that's great, because now we have our wetlands, we have some uplands, we have a lot less roads. Because I look at those roads and the concrete, and I think, you know, that's sort of a problem for us. So, there are some good things about this. I know that you guys would like to have slightly larger lines here, lot lines. I don't know if that's doable or not. I like the, I like the idea that we have a crossing for the critters and the wetlands. Love to save a little bit of the uplands, but maybe that's a compromise that needs to be made, is that we gave up some of those uplands in order to get a slightly larger lot line. So, that's my thought.
Who'd like to be next?
Well, I actually feel like I, I shared an awful lot in discussion. Some of the things that come to mind are what the Realtors said at our, our economic conference, that we need tiny homes in the North Brevard area, and we didn't start having them. I thought then, this was after the first meeting, well, these aren't necessarily tiny homes, but we are at least looking at some smaller homes. I didn't think about it till you said it, but I have a millennial who's an assistant principal at a high school in Orlando, and he lives in six hundred and fifty feet. So, not my cup of tea. But that being said, it clearly is being brought our way that it, it is, it is a coming thing for the, the younger people. They don't want to mow yard. I mean, I work in my garden every day. It's my therapy. My son wants nothing to do with it. He, he doesn't own a lawn mower. So, you know, and then again, I have a son that lives on four acres. So, it just depends on who you are and what you want. I, I personally would be, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't at least send this in, and this is a vote for transmittal to the state, and as Ms. Busaka said, receive their, their reply with their notes, et cetera. I think there's a lot of things in this area that, that are important in housing. We ought, we talk a lot about lower-income housing. That's important. But those who can afford the two-hundred-plus-thousand-dollar smaller homes who are working with the space program now and are looking for places to go, I said it before, and I'll say it again, I don't want them going to Vieira. I want to have a place here for them. And they don't all want to live on two or three acres. And I'd like to at least, you know, move this forward with the transmittal.
Vice Mayor?
So, I have, I guess, a couple of concerns and some positives, and then a step that I would suggest. The first one, just to cut to the chase, is that our timing and P and Z with this is off. And here's what I mean by that. Typically, it goes to P and Z, the recommendation comes here, and then we do something. Respectfully, there was some concern from P and Z. It was denial on the last one. And, and again, historically, I think it's, it's fair to say that when P and Z denies a project, it's not always that it is denied by counsel because it is a recommendation. But I would say there is, there's probably been a substantial amount that whatever they recommend has been where counsel goes. But it's a recommendation only that. But based off that denial, there was comment from the public, and there was comment from the applicant, and respectfully to the applicant, he put a pause on it and then went and met with the community, or at least attempted to meet with the community. We got changes to that, but now P and Z has not had a chance to look at those changes. And I, it has been just what I've learned in the past few years is that even though I may be at a decision point where I feel comfortable with the decision one way or the other, I have definitely learned that the process for some folks is just as critical as whatever the end state is, and I think that we are skipping part of the process. And my, my step one, before I put one more comment into this thing, is number one, get it back to P and Z with the recommended changes. I understand that it's cumbersome. I understand that it is not necessarily, you know, it's not my druthers, because whatever decision, I like to get there and move on. But prudence has told me that give that process its due shake to hear what P and Z has to say with it. So, that would be my number-one step. As far as additional concerns or thank-yous, number one, the footprint of the project, meaning the space that potentially it could take up, I'm comfortable on the space as laid out. I'm not comfortable on the layout itself. So, with the amount of space it's using, I, I think if, I think the amount of space we're using is probably about anybody that comes in, that's the same space that is probably gonna be used. What you fill it, though, with, I'm not so comfortable. So, as an example, and when we talk about density, I get the put more in less space is good for the environment. So, I get that through PD. But here's what I think ultimately the community is shooting for as the give with the developer. If I took across the street the lots that are on the Treetop Drive, if I just took those lots and imposed them on the amount of space that is given, I'm guessing that the community would say, okay. But the developer is gonna say, there's no way to make that financially, I, I'm guessing that there's no way to make that financially viable. Those two things I do not think are going to meet in the middle. When I look at what is good to the community, I think that the, that zoning, which allows that footprint for development equivalent to the size of the existing homes, so on and so on, on that hunk of land, I think that that's the right answer. And here's ultimately why, is because whereas we're talking about one segment of folks who would buy houses, I still think that there is still a very large population as well that has lived in older houses around the community that might be looking for an upgrade in the community. So, whereas I believe that we do have some folks that are coming in, I also believe we have folks that love to live in Titusville, and what you can't buy is a larger home for that and so on and so on in the same community. And keep in mind that from a neighborhood development, when you look at that whole, besides this, there is a reason we put Winn-Dixie and Publix in the community. There's a reason we did that. And for that specific community, that neighborhood chunk of it, I wholeheartedly believe that like that's the fabric dynamic of that community. And to take away from that, when we talk about welfare, it's more than just, you know, is somebody gonna get robbed? I think we're past that. I think the fabric of the community has known that to be a local, to the inclusive of the school at Park Avenue. Like kids, generations have been sending their kids there. So, that's a, that's a thing. I, I have concerns on the, the, the safety of the children, but I also would equate that to, I'm sure that there are traffic studies and so on and so on. But I, but I would like to explore that. So, I, I think before we go any further, I think it's step one, send it back to P and Z and let them do what P and Z does. I, I understand that it's two more steps, and that's a problem, but I think that that's a reasonable request to P and Z. If not, I would not be comfortable with moving forward at this point.
Thank you. Any of you have any comments on?
I, I would like to say that me wanting to move forward and take the next step and, and go to the state, this isn't the final vote. We've said that many times. If this was the final vote, I'd be more concerned about P and Z's thoughts. I definitely would like to see, the one thing that certainly stands out to me with Park Avenue, for example, is the traffic study. What, what's it do? What, what's the traffic study? What, what, what does it add? Where does it go? That's important. It's not just the houses. It's a, it's a whole community. I get that. So, I don't want it to be thought that we're just maybe moving this right along. I want to hear some things, too. But this is just a step where they come back with some notes and some questions that maybe I didn't even have yet. But I, I am, would always be concerned about traffic around a school, and quite honestly, wherever you live, talked about, I think you said Royal Oak Boulevard, whatever it is, nobody wants to suddenly have an outlet of traffic going down your road. I get that. So, all I'm wanting to do is hear more, and just because we send it to the state in the transmittal doesn't mean that we have approved anything. But I do want to say, which I've heard many of the members of the community say, and when we met with you, I appreciate what you've done and how you've communicated. We don't always have people come in here and communicate like you did. And I heard one, one speaker said that two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar homes in that area, that would be great, be great for me. I think there is a part over here with the community that would like to see it work. And, and I just hope that we can.
Let me take a stab at this. I was sort of halfway between going and transmitting it, and part of me says, go back to P and Z. And I think I'm coming down to the Vice Mayor's position of sending it back to P and Z. And I will, I will say this is why. Because I think in that process, there's some, we will end up with more information that we may not have right now. And we'll have a whole set of eyes, get a chance to really dig into this and come up with some kind of recommendations. I don't think it's an absolute, we have to do that. But on the other hand, part of me is like, I, I don't think that's a bad idea. So, that's my, my thought.
Thank you. City Attorney, can I ask Mr. Moya a question? I mean.
Sure.
The public hearing is closed, but can I ask him a question?
You can ask him. And again, this is not quasi-judicial. This is legislative.
Okay.
Just to let you know, a comment was made, but when you're dealing with comprehensive plan amendments, those are a legislative process versus a rezoning, which would be quasi-judicial.
Thank you. Would you? Are you under any time constraints that if we were to table this? I hate to do it to you, but there is some reluctance, and we are missing a member.
Sir, yes, I, I, I see that, and it does make it tough when it, there's an even number of. And it does make it tough when there's an even number of council members. I, yeah, I would rather, well, yeah, I think I would rather table it and come, as long as coming back here. I really think that when you directed me to go back to talk to the neighbors, I think you've heard all the issues. I don't know, I mean, I'm on P and Z, so I know when it gets to commission, we don't see it again. Once we've, once we've, once they've met with commission, it's very rare unless they change the complete intent of the submittal that it would come back to see us. So I don't know if hashing out all the issues that you've heard tonight will, will be of any help going back to P and Z, because I don't think anything new is going to come. That's my opinion. So I would rather come back to this board, the full board, and discuss the issues. And if there are any more questions, I'm sure I'll be getting some emails from the neighbors and possibly from staff that we could address at the next meeting, if that would be possible.
Did you, did, did you give P and Z, when you last spoke to them, all the changes that you?
No, no. When we went to P and Z, we went with the old plan, and then that's when we had a...
You may have a whole different reception there. I mean, you've made a lot of compromises. I think everybody recognizes that.
We did, and you can see, we still also have a lot of concerns. You know, legitimate or not, in my opinion, I can't really comment on that, but I don't know. I've, my experience has always been that P and Z sometimes is more receptive to the emotional side of an issue as opposed to really the intent of the issue. But if that's what, if you want to send us back there, I'd rather come back to this board as a full board.
Well, you will come back to us.
Eventually, yes.
In any case, you will.
Yeah, and I don't know what that timeframe is.
Well, that's my next question. Mr. Saka, what would, where would we have to table it to in order to get it back to the P and Z? Table it on this commission coming back?
I imagine we have to go through the whole...
I have to think.
No problem.
This is not attractive, and I...
Will we have to re-advertise all over again and all that? I think we would, wouldn't we?
And also, I want to describe in the process, when it comes, if you do transmit, it comes back, it will go to P and Z again.
It will go to P and Z again. But if I could, and this may not be helpful, and this is not the question you asked, I understood that. P and Z recommended denial for four reasons. One was due to lot size, that has not changed. Two was due to the house size, that has changed. Three was due to cutting off the wetlands, that has not changed. The access point has not changed. So the only issue that P and Z discussed in their recommendation that has changed was the house size. I don't know if that changes anyone's opinion or not, but if we have to re-advertise and then go back to P and Z, I think that means that we get to P and Z maybe late October and get back here in November. So that's another six weeks. Now, if, excuse me, just one more second. If this is transmitted to the state, it will take about three months. So we would then expect to have that come back in probably closer to December.
And then after it gets back from the state, it goes through P and Z again before councils to public hearings?
That's correct.
So we'd accomplish, I think, what everybody wants at that point. So we can table it to the next, I'm sorry, so you spoke already, we have to let everybody else? Sorry?
I just wanted some clarification. Once it goes to the state, a lot size, two houses, we're going to have, right?
No, sir. This, the transmittal, the, council has the right to make changes after transmittal. That's the reason for the public hearing. What we get is comments from the state and the agencies that review. So we'll get, all of the review agencies who want to comment will do that.
So we can transmit it, then we'd get it back at the end of that period, and then we can?
Then you can modify it as you see fit. Yes, sir.
Is that, cause you want to?
And it goes back to P and Z before it comes back? So it's going to go to P and Z? So yeah, so if we could transmit, it doesn't, like she said, it doesn't guarantee us anything. You're not approving anything. So if we could take that step, that would be more desirable, and then we can work out other issues as we go along.
Can I have a motion?
Okay, well, can I just clarify, just so there's, there's no thinking that there's a rush to judgment here? That's exactly as I'd understood it. This is not a vote to approve anything. And I said that eight minutes ago. And I'm just wanting to move it forward, and then I do like the fact that then P and Z has to see it again, so then we just really come back for a real hearing down the road. But I, you know, again, we're three months, once we send it to the state.
Yes, sir. And I also want to clarify for everyone in the audience that there will be notices go out also, as well as an advertisement. So this will be a repeat of that entire public hearing process.
And no matter what the state sends back, we have the opportunity to edit and adjust at that time.
Absolutely.
And sir, would you give staff your address, so you do get one invitation this time? Yes, sir, please.
Yeah, I was wondering why they didn't give one last time.
I know you said that. That's why I said what I said. Thank you. Now? Motion?
I guess the motion we're looking for is, that I'm looking for is to approve the transmittal of, what is the ordinance here?
Comprehensive plan.
Comprehensive plan.
Twenty eighteen oh two.
Twenty eighteen oh two.
Yeah, there we go. Twenty eighteen oh two to the state.
Do I have, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed, like sign?
No.
That's not a yes?
Or a yes. Opposition.
Okay. Passes three to one. Thank you. Can we have about a five-minute break here, just to let everybody out? We'll come back here a quarter after. Hey Chuck? Chuck? You work, Chuck? Charles? two, one seventy-eight of the Code of Ordinances. Ordinance number forty-four, two thousand eighteen. An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending section two, one seventy-eight of the Code of Ordinances by providing how contractor awards are decided when more than one firm qualifies under the local preference policy, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. This is the second reading of public hearing of this ordinance.
At the regular city council meeting on May twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, when the award of a contract for an installation of a forced main on State Route four oh five was presented to city council for approval, both the local city of Titusville firm and a Brevard County firm were eligible for the award under the city's local preference policy. Council requested that staff come back to council with recommendations to modify the local preference that incorporates the application of the policy. At the regular city council meeting on August twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen, staff provided council consideration of two options to modify the local preference, providing how contractor or procurement would be awarded if more than one local firm eligible for the award is under the city's local preference policy. We have our contract manager, Jesus, in the back of the room here, to answer any of your questions concerning this, your second reading of ordinance forty-four, two thousand eighteen.
I ought to turn my microphone on. You can have a seat if you want. Do you have any comments on this item?
No, sir, not at this time.
Okay. City council, any questions? You walked all that way for nothing, but you never know. Stay, stay for a while. Okay. We'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this item?
We have no cards.
I'll close the public hearing. Council, much pleasure.
I'd move to approve ordinance number forty-four dash twenty eighteen, amending section two dash one seventy-eight of the Code of Ordinances.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Nice hearing, any, all those in favor say, vote, roll call. Says not roll call. Oops, that's the wrong one, I was on the next one. Roll call vote, please.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item?
The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with conditions as stated in the staff report, the vote was five zero. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to establish a childcare facility on a vacant parcel of land located on the north side of South Street, State Route four oh five, just west of Angela Lane. The property subject to the request is approximately ten point five acres in size and is located within the GU and open space OR zoning districts. The proposed childcare facility is approximately eighteen thousand square feet in area, plus an outdoor play area of approximately eighteen thousand square feet. The proposed facility will utilize existing driveway for the Space Coast Unity Church located to the west for vehicular access to the property. And this is your CUP four dash two thousand eighteen. Staff is available to answer any questions that you may have on this CUP.
Ms. Busaka, any comments?
Yes, I just want to make sure that you know that we have recommended with conditions of approval as shown, which includes that the childcare facility will be in general conformance with the original con... conformance with the original concept plan, which did show a layout for a dedicated pickup, which is required in the code. We would like to see a cross-access easement or agreement between the subject property and the property located at two thousand South Street because they are trying to utilize a common access, which we appreciate. The sidewalk currently on the South Street is located on the subject property, and we're asking for an easement for that. And finally, that the parking area should be stabilized using a system or product that maintains or improves development soil percolation because it's in the area of critical concern. We're asking for a traffic study being required because the number of trips and that a thirty-foot landscape buffer would front South Street. If you have any, we have, the staff has reviewed this, found that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan as outlined in the report that you have in front of you. If you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Counsel, any questions for staff? I see no lights. I'll open the public hearing. Clerk, are there any cards on this item?
We have one card. It's Mr. Shaheeb.
Mr. Shaheeb, please come up, sir. And you need to turn that microphone on.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Sid Shaheeb. I'm here, I'm the engineer of record on this project, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have. We don't have any issues with, or we read the staff comments, and we actually, you know, worked a few of the things out already, so we have no, no, no problems with the, with the staff recommendation.
Any questions for Mr. Shaheeb?
Thank you.
I see none. Thank you, sir. I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, discussion? I see no discussion. Ask for motion?
Move to approve the cap number forty dash twenty-eighteen to allow a childcare facility within the general use zoning district with the conditions outlined.
I have a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. Next item, ordinance first reading.
Ordinance number thirty-five, two thousand and eighteen, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending chapter thirty-two signs to amend content-based restrictions, specifically amending sections thirty-two one, purpose of regulations, scope thirty-two two, definitions, and thirty-two dash four exempt signs, replacing section thirty-two five specialty signs with section thirty-two five temporary sign regulations, deleting section thirty-two seven political signs, amending section thirty-two eight D billboards, amending section thirty-two twenty-one miscellaneous restrictions and prohibitions, amending section thirty-two twenty-six off-premises signs and billboards, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, effective date and incorporation into the code.
City manager?
At their September nineteen, two thousand and eighteen, meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended sending this ordinance back to staff to allow additional time, to revise language to address additional signage during specific timeframes, such as elections and temporary signs associated with properties for sale. The vote by P and Z was five zero. This is your first reading of ordinance thirty-five, two thousand and eighteen, and Ms. Busaka is available to answer any questions that you may have.
My only comment is that staff has already scheduled the meeting to do the, this review requested by the Planning and Zoning, so we will be bringing that information back to you at the next meeting.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? Not seeing any. This is the first reading. No action is necessary. Next item, please.
Next item is item B, ordinance number forty-five, two thousand and eighteen, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending ordinance number sixty, nineteen eighty-eight, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the city of Titusville, by amending the future land use, transportation, conservation, capital improvement, infrastructure, housing, coastal management, recreation in open space, intergovernmental coordination, and public school facilities elements of the comprehensive plan as identified in the major issues of the evaluation and appraisal report the year, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
At their September nineteen, two thousand and eighteen, meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as the local planning agency, recommended approval with the following changes. Number one, consider amending the twenty percent threshold for properties located within the coastal high hazard area. Number two, modify rather than delete C policies one point one point five and one point one point nine to keep the requirement for environmental survey. And three, remove the reference to the Taylor Creek Reservoir from the infrastructure element in object two point five D one. Vote was five zero. And Ms. Busaka is available to answer any questions you may have on this. Your first reading of ordinance forty-five, two thousand and eighteen.
Any comments first?
Well, we did hear what, the comments that you made during our presentation meeting, so we will be working on that as well as what the P and Z recommended. So you'll see a little bit different, some language, when we see it the next time.
Okay. And, uh, go right.
Can I?
Yes, two, go ahead.
Can I ask a question that is sort of related to this, but is not related to this? They were talking about incentives for certain, certain things happening. Do we have incentives for green building? Somebody does an environmentally friendly building. Do we have incentives for it?
We do not, but if you remember, I, way of been the last meeting or the meeting before this, the T E, T E C actually asked for advisability to go forward with green building.
Yes.
We have now joined the green building coalition, maybe that's the name. And so you can expect that we will be coming back to you with some recommendations.
Okay. I was just curious because they were talking about using alternative energy, and you got some type of incentive for it, and I thought, well, what about the buildings? So.
Thanks. You're welcome.
It's a good question. Any other questions from counsel? See any? Clerk, or, oh, this is a...
Yes, sir, we have, we have two cards.
You have two cards, okay.
I'm Claudette Beggs and Mr. Althoff.
Would you like to go first? Ladies first. That's fair.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel.
Good evening.
We hung in here for this entire city council meeting only to say thank you. This is pertaining to the land use elements in the comprehensive plan, and specifically the policy one point one point seven, which refers to the River Edge Drive Neighborhood Small Area Plan that was established in two thousand and four. Anyway, we're just happy and thanks, thankful for the way the development is going in, on that street. You know, it's only like seven tenths of a mile long or something. It's turning into a nice residential area. You know, there's a bunch of beautiful homes that are being built there on the west side of River Edge, and it's just really becoming a more, just a nice environment. We like that kind of development. We're happy with that development, and we just want to thank you for letting this come to fruition for us. It's something we've been hoping and praying for. I've lived there over nineteen years and just loving it, so, thank you.
Well, thank you for coming, and thank you for your patience, staying so long.
It's been interesting, I must say.
Always interesting, sometimes longer interesting than others, though. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Okay, you're welcome.
Next card, please.
Tom Althoff.
Good evening.
Good evening. I attended two meetings...
If you will, for the record.
Oh, Tom Althoff, four-ten South Hopkins.
Thank you, sir.
Titusville. I attended two meetings regarding the coastal high hazard area, and I have to compliment city staff on it. Those young guys did a great job. Everybody's younger than me, so they're, they're young. They did a great job explaining this. The one area that, that I'm questioning how that will impact me, since I'm moving my business from downtown to a coastal site, and I fall, I now fall into this zone, the twenty percent threshold is what I'm concerned about.
Well, I'll tell you, staff.
This is, this is what I'd like to do, is I'd like to meet with you, Mr. Althoff, because have you seen our maps? And do you know if the area you're moving into has, is shown on the map as being an area that's likely to be inundated?
I'm in that middle section.
Okay. There's very few of those areas, but what, what the policy that you're talking about refers to is, it is for sensitive, vulnerable populations, they call it. So we're looking at eliminating or reducing the impacts to hospitals, A L Fs, and other homes that would have, or facilities that would have to be evacuated. So if you're talking about a store, then that might be a very different impact, but I would be happy to meet with you and look at that specifically, and then we can, the next meeting, you'll know whether you're concerned or not. How about that?
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And thank you for being so patient. There's no vote necessary on this first reading. Old business?
I have item C first, which is ordinance number forty-six, two thousand and eighteen.
Did I skip one? Sorry.
Ordinance number forty-six, two thousand and eighteen, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, updating the five-year capital improvement schedule of the comprehensive plan of the city of Titusville for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty-three horizon relating to the capital improvement element and providing for an effective date.
This is your first reading of ordinance forty-six, two thousand and eighteen, for the capital improvement element of our annual update. Staff is available to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? I see none. Now we'll go to old business. There's no old business, new business? See nothing? Petitions and requests from the public? I don't see any.
Can I ask?
Mayor and counsel, can you ask, or can you speak?
Can I speak?
You can now. Mayor and counsel reports. I'll, I'll defer to you.
Do you want to go ahead?
No, you have my report, and if anybody has any questions? Not, go right ahead.
I had two individuals come up and pose different projects or different ideas to me, and I, I thought I'd share them with you. One was the, was a proposal for a bed tax on the larger hotels, specifically to use that money to develop trails within the town and to market those trails. This is apparently something that Seattle is doing, and this person had, is Lisa Moser. She had recently been in Seattle, and they charged two dollars a night, like a bed tax, but that money was specifically earmarked for trails. And I thought, well, that's sort of an interesting idea. I don't know if it's, it's, it's worth a conversation, because, you know, we're trying to develop a trail going north and south along U S one, along the river, and that might be something that is at least worth thinking about. So I brought it to Mr. Larisse, and he suggested that I bring it to council because it's something that would take some staff time in looking at it and seeing if this was something that we even want to think about, or if, if we can even think about it, if it's doable.
We can think about it, whether it's doable is another...
Well, yeah, but we should know whether it's doable before we...
Right.
Spin our wheels. And I will tell you, the second thing that I discussed with him is there are some people out of Georgia Tech that were interested in doing a prototype of a roadway that develops electricity, produces electricity. Member Behringer, did you hear about it? You may have been...
Yeah.
I've heard, I've raised this, I've seen different models of, yes, similar to that, but the idea was like, it was kind of like panels and something like this, so. I have seen something about the laying of infrastructure that allows for the conduction of electricity as a portion of that, and it seemed, it was very smart, the fidelity of it, I wasn't sure. I knew nothing more about the background of it, cost, things like that, but...
That was another thing that I thought, well, that would be something interesting, but it would be helpful if, if we said, yeah, we want to look at it, and then maybe Mr. Larisse could give it to somebody to look at and spend a couple of hours on it and make a decision on if it's something that is feasible.
Does this have something to do with the tax, the two percent?
No, these are two separate...
Two separate things, okay.
People keep talking to me. I don't understand.
You're not running fast enough.
I'm obviously not running fast enough, but they, but people come up with some, sometimes really good ideas, so I, I just have to pass them on.
No, that's fine. No, that's, that's great. I, I'd like to address the first one.
Okay.
I've been on the Tourist Development Council for sixteen years or seventeen years, something like that, and I was, worked initially to get the tax paid.
Okay.
Passed, rather. It will take our legislature to approve.
Okay.
I believe, because we had to do it for the five cents for the, for the tax, and there's, you have to get a certain amount of votes, not votes, but petitions signed or something, I believe, but it is a process, and that by no means, means to stop it. I'm just explaining to you, there is a process. We can't just, I don't believe, I don't know, maybe I should turn to the city attorney on that. We couldn't do that autonomously. It would take an act of the legislature, wouldn't it?
I would have to research the process.
Yeah. I, just from my experiences, that's, that's what had to be done.
I, I would imagine there's some type of process, but then the question was, do we even want to look and see what the process is and at least look at it?
I, I'd say that we could ask the city attorney to research it and come back with that, at least that information. That would know how, what kind of a place we're in getting it done.
Okay.
That would take. Mr. City Attorney? You, we're asking you to take a look at that item and get back to us?
Yes.
Come on.
Great. I think, I hear two of the four, is it the other? Two council members in agreement?
Everybody, everybody in agreement?
I have no problem looking into it.
I don't mind finding out about it, just remember, being forward, I'm not excited about attacks on attacks that we currently have, and my concern would be an adverse effect.
I don't think it's attacks on attacks. It would be attacks on whoever rents the place, and they would pay, if it's a short-term amount on the six months, they would pay five percent bed tax. Now, there would be an additional two percent, which might, if this got passed, of seven percent.
Yes.
But it's not a tax on a tax. It's a tax on a...
I think we're also looking at the local hotels in addition.
Yeah, oh, it would be hotels, yeah. Not only, not only, it would be hotels, and anybody who rents anything for less than six months would have to pay that.
But I, I would definitely be willing to, to look at it, to vet it out.
I think it's worth looking at to see if we have that ability.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't say that I necessarily say, hey, I'm for it for a trail.
I, I agree.
I'm not saying I am or not, but I'm saying that I never thought about the possibility of us creating a little revenue from visitors, and I'm not saying I'm even for that, but I'd sure like to find out if we can.
I think we're all in agreement.
Yeah, I thought it was an interesting proposition, and it may be something that people really want us to do, because I, it would be nice to have that trail from the north to the south completed, and I think it'd probably add to some tourism here. So that was just my thought.
Okay.
And the other...
We got it covered.
Okay.
Your second one was?
The road.
The road?
Yes.
You mean, there was two roads, I thought there was a pathway, and then there was the electric one.
The electric road.
The electric road, okay. I don't know.
Not a comment?
Sure.
Yeah, so that, that one, my suggestion would be to send that to the T E C, and here's why. I, I think that it's probably in their wheelhouse. It's a different look at something in their wheelhouse, but it would be something where maybe they could go through the vetting process and give an opinion on that, and relative to, because roads are... And relative to, because roads are, from an infrastructure standpoint, there ain't nothing cheap about a road.
No.
I'm telling you, this isn't going to be any cheaper.
And I don't think it is, so, I, at the end of it, it's, I think the benefit, the net benefit that we're trying to achieve is some environmental impact. I think it fails on the wheelhouse, but to explore it, sure, and then add, hear their comments possibly.
I think that that's pie in the sky kind of thing, too, but at the, with the, we just, we do well to have asphalt roads coming down, but I agree also, send it to the TEC instead of hitting staff with that. I just don't know enough about it to say, hey, let's do this.
Do we have consensus on that? Yes, yes?
I think we have consensus on it, is I correct?
Yes.
And the only reason I said maybe involve staff is because I believe these people are looking at coming down here at some point, so it would be good that everybody get to meet them and see what they have to say.
Okay. City Manager, right?
Imitator.
All right. Yes, sir.
Thank you, and Council, thank you for this. So, I'm, I'm asking you for your support specifically for the creation of a resolution, and I would welcome your input on it. This is derived, in short, this is derived from children in possession of pornography and the distribution of. And so, what I'm, what I'm hoping is that there would be a consensus or just one, a resolution that would encourage the non-possession and non-spread of pornography for, with children. And here's where this comes from. And it comes under the idea that it's a nuisance to our community, number one. And unfortunately, technology has outpaced policy in a big, big way. And I don't know if, the state of Florida has laws to follow up with this, which I think are dead-on, which I'm grateful for. So, the law that the state of Florida has relative to children in possession of pornography, I think are dead-on and spot-on. I think that our city has a great opportunity, in partnership with our school district and county, to maybe pick this banner up and at least address the issue that's already on the books, which I would, I would hope that we would all have an agreement that needs to happen. And here's, here's the catalyst, is that as, as young people have phones, and it's beyond the norm at this point, that a 13-year-old would have a smartphone, that's just, it's kind of normal. What we haven't figured out, I think, as a community on how to do, is to regulate that phone to the extent that it is not destructive to that child. And whereas most, I think, parents would feel comfortable with saying, I don't allow my child to look, partake, be a part of the content of pornography, the reality of it is, if I go to my schoolroom and I pull out 25 kids' phones, the chance of me finding that whole lot of it is pretty good. I think, Member Diesel, you might be able to have some perspective on the breadth of this. In addition, really where it's gone to is that there's entire pages set up by kids that they send and drop naked photos of each other to these spots within our community. This is definitely happening. And what they've figured out is, as long as they don't show their head, you can't figure out that it's a kid. And the reality is, it's a ton of, it's a hub of child pornography, but they figured out how to beat the system. And so, that, it's highly concerning to me. Unfortunately, I think that our schools have become the hub of distribution, not out of intent, but it's where every kid in our community goes to every day. And the spread is so fast and so far that it's very hard to control. There's a tremendous amount of issues that go along with this, but I think that through the adoption of a resolution, it at least brings it forward into the forefront as an issue that we're willing to at least address and tackle. And we can do it in conjunction with the other agencies that work with kids.
Anything else?
That, that's it, sir, thank you.
I have, nobody likes child, I shouldn't say that, people, obviously, perverted people like child pornography, but no normal person likes child pornography. But I'd ask you to be a little bit patient, more so than we have maybe in the past, because this is a police matter and a school board matter. And I don't want to jump in with a resolution until we find out what the laws are and what the status is and who, who, let's find out what they do now. I mean, it may all be there, for all I know. I suspect there are, you've mentioned you know laws that are there. So, I'd like to find out from, have the chief come, police chief come in and talk to us-
Sir, we can send you the statute, it's pretty tight.
Pretty tight?
Yeah, it's, it's well-written and-
Do you think that's enough information for us to make a decision on, though?
Sir, I can, I can send you the state law.
I get that, but having somebody to ask about the state law, police chief-
Sure, sure, we can bring the chief in.
Yeah, yeah, I think that would be worth doing.
Okay.
And, and again, you know, if it accomplishes anything, that's great, but if it's already there and the laws are there and everything, then, and maybe the school board isn't doing it correctly, we can, we can deal with that, not necessarily on a resolution.
Okay.
I've met with the, at the request of council, I met with the new superintendent, and he's a very nice guy, a good guy to talk to, and he's, he's mostly homegrown.
Right.
He's moved in, he's lived here for a long time. And he said, anytime we have anything, just give him a call and sort of misty Belford. So, let's, let's keep it in stages at this point, okay? All right, thank you. Anything, anybody have anything else, other than?
I was just going to say, I was going, well, first of all, I was going to say, I noticed that Member Nelson's getting ideas from the citizens. We went to that event the other day, and I, I had some people speak to me, and it was four fires to put out and some road issues, and I'm like, where are the ideas coming to me? But anyway, we had-
No, they come, they come to all of us.
I had some concerns.
Depends on where you're standing.
I'll send you, you're right.
No, 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 I'll send you the other stuff. Member Behringer, I more than appreciate your concern. I certainly, through the years, have had phone issues and picture issues, and what looked like a good idea at a party on Saturday was a terrible idea on Monday. Totally agree. But along with the, the sending the electric roads to the TEC, I think that Mayor is, is on the right track. Let's hear what the police chief has to say about it. If he thinks that a ordinance from us is a good idea, then we can go further with that, but that doesn't take away from my thought that you, you were right on, that technology has far outpaced our ability to keep up with what's going on in every hallway. So, thank you for that.
Well, I'm, can I chime in?
You, you want a second bite here under that apple?
Well, I'm on, I'm on chime in.
All right, go ahead, it's all right.
As somebody who spent a lot of time looking at and prosecuting pornography, I would like to say that that was the easiest way to clear a room, because in determining what you had, had in front of you and what you were going to charge, I could have a whole office full of people, and if I said, I need to charge this person, I gotta pull up these pictures, they all left. I mean, they ran. That was, oh, they, child pornography is absolutely disgusting.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah.
No, I, I could see two, two reasons. One is because it's also difficult to determine what's pornographic and what isn't. The Supreme Court couldn't do it. They said, you'll, you'll know it when you see it, so.
You know it when you see it.
Yeah.
The problem came down to the sexting with the teenagers, and there were a lot of different problems with it. The statute, when I left the state attorney's office, we were talking about how we were going to handle that, because the first violation was the civil citation, and then it became a misdemeanor. It was all good and, and fine, except the parents of the girl always wanted to prosecute the boy, but then they got upset if the boy's parents wanted to prosecute the girl. And then there was a question of, how are you going to prosecute, what are the penalties going to be? When I left, they were talking about sending those cases to crosswinds for a civil citation kind of program. So, there's, there's ways to, to deal with it. I don't know how effective they are, but there were a multitude of evidence problems in it. And you had a lot of reluctance, and you're right. How do you prove this image on this phone belongs to A, B, or C? Or that they're actually a juvenile? Now, a lot of it, you could go to the child pornography statutes, regular statutes, which are felonies, but that seems sort of happy-handed. But on rare occasions, you had to use those statutes. And that, I guarantee, always got people's attention. So, the statutes are out there, it's just a matter of, of using them. And then the other problem is the evidence, and there's probably, I mean, you got a school of 700 kids, how many, how many of those kids can the system take before you overlook the system? So, you have all those practical questions, too.
We can proceed with the, with the chief, I guess, and see what he has to say.
Mayor, can I come to it?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. And to, to everybody's, so, Mayor, number one, I think prudence is appropriate as far as getting, getting the information before moving forward, so thank you for that. And just for context of, of kind of where I, where I would envision this going, to, the Florida law that is in place, I think is spot-on. So, I, the, the good news is, we're, I believe we're already there with resolve, and there's two, two portions. One is child pornography as defined as child pornography, and the stuff that is a law enforcement agent, I have full confidence that when they come across that and there is a case for that, that they are going to do everything in their power that they can do. That, that's not really what I'm talking about. I think that that, that's, it's a felony and that we are above and beyond. What I'm actually more concerned with is, it's the kid on the periphery who is, is not intending to be the perv in a, I mean, whatever the case may be, but is not really that slime ball of society. What I mean by that is, it is a 14-year-old kid who has pictures on his phone, right? That, but probably in our age, it was, the norm was a playboy who, who the heck knows, right? It's two 16-year-olds, you know, here's a playboy. Well, that, that doesn't work like that anymore. The, the reality of it is, is it's whatever photos on a phone, and I'm not even saying that it was sent from somebody, I mean, maybe it was downloaded, maybe it was sent, but I'm just saying, the kid's on the phone, and he's got it, and it's in his hand, that's my phone, that's my picture. And the, and what I believe is the current penalty for that, it's a civil citation of $60, it's a cyber course, and it's eight hours of community service. I think that that's totally appropriate for, why do you have that? And the reality of it is, am I, am I as concerned with student or, or people within the entire community, whatever? I do not expect law enforcement to go around making this a priority. On the other hand, there is a spot in our community where kids meet all the time, and that is at our schools. And because they're in and out within the community, I think there's a good partnership leverage there. For the kid who's on the periphery, he's making a mistake, but I don't think a $60 civil citation and eight hours of doing good for the community is too much. I think that's about right, so, just trying to move that forward. So, thank you, that's the context of it.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything? If not, I will declare this meeting adjourned.
No, 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 no.
Sorry. Did I not catch you? Trying to make it by nine. Who's got nine o'clock?
Let me drag this out a little bit. Just a reminder, the Boards and Commission recognition dinner is on October 15, 2018, at 6:00 PM at Rivers Edge Event Center. FDOT conducted a, a meeting regarding Garden Street enhancements and concepts. On Thursday, we had approximately 50 residents there. They discussed the two concepts of having roundabouts at Singleton and Garden Street, as well as US-1 and, corrections, yeah, US-1 and Garden Street. My observation of the event was, of the 50 residents, very few were happy with those concepts. FDOT will bring their concept before council for your consideration sometime October, maybe November on that. But if you hear any questions about the roundabouts, really has nothing to do with the city, other than you, as council members, taking the input from the citizens. This is an FDOT project, so.
It's not a general, in my experience, and also being on the TPO now, it's, it's not a generally accepted method or methodology in Florida or in most of the United States, I think. They're just not used to it. It does work open, over in Europe, but over here, we, especially locally, with, the only one we have was underbuilt in Viera, and it caused all kinds of problems, and that's what everybody thinks about, so.
Yes, sir, and I just want to make sure, we, FDOT will begin resurfacing portions of Garden Street next week, from about midway up on Garden Street, in between Singleton and US-1, working their way towards US-1. They'll skip the portion between US-1 and AMAX West Side and pick up the resurfacing on East Side of AMAX to where it goes into the federal property. So, I just want to make sure that people don't get worried that this construction is, construction of roundabouts, it is not, is a repaving project. Second, the Hopkins Street repaving project, notice to proceed, was issued. We expect mobilization not later than 15 October on that project. We believe that it should take them probably to the end of the year with the holidays embedded in November and December. And last item, the trail is now open to Edgewater. It opened on Friday, so you're able to bicycle from New Smyrna Beach to Titusville. It's approximately 44 miles, and it's a beautiful ride to go up there and spend the night and come back. I would not recommend you do it in one day. If you go up there and you need to spend the night and-
About three weeks for me.
And as my wife yelled at me all the way home, that extra 40 miles, I learned that it's definitely worth spending the night there, if you choose to do that. So, subject to your questions, that completes my, my portion.
Any questions? Anything else for the good of the order? I hear nothing. This meeting is adjourned.